Welcome, everyone. The hour being 7:00 PM on Wednesday, March 15, 2023. The Tuilla City Council's meeting in a business meeting being held in the Tuilla City Hall Council chambers located at 90 North Main Street. This is also being streamed electronically on the Tuilla City YouTube channel. We will start with the first item, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is a roll call. Councilwoman Manzio.
Present.
Councilman Hanson.
Present.
Councilman McCall.
Present.
Councilman Graff. He's joining us by phone, and I'm Councilman Brady, and I'm also present. Item three is a National Vietnam War Veterans Day Proclamation of 2023. This is presented by Mayor Debbie Nguyen.
Thank you, Chairman and Council. It is a pleasure to be able to present this proclamation to you tonight. The United States of America was heavily involved in the two-decade-long war that took place in Vietnam from 1955 to 1975. Millions of American men and women served in various capacities throughout the duration of the war, exhibiting unparalleled courage, patriotism, and devotion to service. The commemoration of the Vietnam War pays tribute to the altruism and sacrifice demonstrated by Vietnam War veterans while on duty, as well as the industriousness and innovation they demonstrated upon their return. We in Tuilla City come together to offer our respects to the incredible veterans who left their homes in this great city and state to serve their fellow countrymen, and furthermore, express our sincerest gratitude, especially to those who reside in Tuilla City today. On March 29, 1973, the United States Armed Forces completed the withdrawal of combat troops from Vietnam. March 29 has been designated as the annual observance of Vietnam War Veterans Day and provides the opportunity to recognize, honor, and thank our Vietnam veterans. It is an honor for me to present this proclamation as mayor of Tuilla City, and I do hereby designate March 29, 2023, as Vietnam War Veterans Day. We have beautiful images there of the statue that was placed at our Veterans Memorial Park honoring the Vietnam veterans. We had a wonderful ribbon-cutting ceremony one Memorial Day to recognize their service, and we had a lot of visitors and tourists to our city that day that were Vietnam War veterans. I also have a pin on today that one of our local Vietnam veterans gave to me. It's got a picture of a flag on it, and it says, "This national debt can never be repaid." It is very awesome that we have people in our community like this who will service, give their service to our country and to our city, so we appreciate them very much. And I will sign this and get it all legal and hang it up, so make sure that they know how much we appreciate it.
Thank you, yes, we appreciate our veterans very much. All right, we'll move on to item four, which is the Mayor's Community Recognition Award. This is also presented by Mayor Debbie Nguyen.
If you don't mind, I'm going to turn this direction. You know, it is a great honor to recognize individuals in our community who go above and beyond their regular job or what they normally do in our community, to really serve other people. And we have done for many years our Mayor's Youth Recognition Award, and we have recognized our youth. And I have felt that it would be very important to also recognize anyone, no matter their age, and recognize their service to our community. So we have begun this new Mayor's Community Recognition Award. We've given away a few of these awards, made the recognition. But today, we would like to recognize Kristi Johnson, who was nominated by Melissa Wallace. And Kristi, if you and Melissa would please come up here, join me at the podium while I read a few words. These are, come right on this side. I want you to be right here by me. Melissa nominated Kristi, and this is what Melissa wrote. Kristi started working with the Tuilla County School District in 2014 as the homeless liaison. This position was to identify those students who were facing poverty or homelessness. She would help these students to obtain showers at the schools, lunches and dinners on the weekend, and whatever the students needed to be successful at school. Every year, Kristi provided the back-to-school closet for those students that couldn't afford to purchase supplies for the new school year. These students could select clothing, shoes, a new backpack, and various school supplies. In 2020, a nonprofit organization arrived in Tuilla that would help the adults that were facing homelessness and poverty in our community. She has worked with Switchpoint to open a thrift store that would help with operations for the food pantry, domestic violence, and a temporary homeless shelter. When an opportunity came up to purchase an old elementary school for the homeless and those in need, including a 24/7 childcare facility, she jumped on board to get this up and running. Every year at Thanksgiving, she has organized Project Thanksgiving to help the seniors and shut-ins receive a hot meal. Kristi works 50 to 70 hours a week to make sure that the people of Tuilla City are warm, fed, and safe. Melissa said that Kristi is the most selfless person she knows. It's hard not to get emotional, because I saw, well, I've seen many times, but I saw firsthand a specific instance where Kristi touched someone in our community that no one else could touch. For years, there was a gentleman that was homeless. He owned a home, but he was homeless because of the condition of his home. He was being taken advantage by other homeless people. Many, many people in this community reached out to this gentleman to try to help him. No one succeeded, except Kristi. And I truly believe it is because he knew she really loved him and cared about him. And that is why she touched him, and he responded to her requests and her offer to help. She got him in a place that he was well taken care of until he passed away. She took phone calls from him on a pretty regular basis after he moved away, but it is because she cared. She used her own car, gas, the fuel, to take him to where he needed to go, and she really did take care of him, and I do believe that she is the only one that could reach him because she did love him. So thank you, Kristi, for all you do.
Thank you. My pleasure.
So we have an awesome little, this little award for you to maybe hang up, and this little gift for you. And do we have somebody that can take a picture? Could you do that for us, Holly? I would, if we could, let's have the council just right behind us. We'll just do it right here. You'll stand up, and then we'll be following them. Right behind us. Melissa, get up.
That is so rude. Get back here.
You nominate, you have to have your picture.
That is so rude. That's not what they said.
Thank you so much. And really, we do appreciate the nomination, too. We receive nominations, and we just want to make sure that we do recognize the people who totally deserve it, so thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate everything you do in the community. We'll move on to item five, which is our public comment period. This is the time for the public to come up and make comments towards the council. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. You state your name into the mic, and then you sign the paper located over here. The time is now the public's. Since I see them walking out, I don't, yeah, I don't think anyone else is coming, so. I will close the public comment period, and we will move on to item six, which is a public hearing and motion on ordinance 2023-11, in ordinance of Tuilla City reassigning the land use designation for approximately 0.39 acres of property located at 60 South Main Street from community commercial to mixed use. This is presented by Jim Bolser, the Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, council members. You may recall a few meetings ago, we had a discussion in your study meeting regarding a specific application and whether or not to approach it as a text amendment or a map amendment. The result of that discussion was a sense that the council would prefer to see it as a map amendment, so here we are as a map amendment for you this evening. Very briefly, this is the property in question. It's often referred to as the Old Gordon Furniture Building. It's the south half of a conjoined unit building, so it's got a, it's attached to another portion of the same building that does, has other units and other ownership as well. So it's outlined in red in the center of your screen. It's at 60 South Main, which is on the west side of Main Street, as you can see outlined here, and it does have some parking, some limited parking resources towards the back of the building or the west side of the building off of 50 West. Currently, the land use is community commercial, as are the properties to the north and south, as well as to the east. The properties across 50 West are identified currently as medium-density residential. Again, this is the land use map, not the zoning map. The zoning map actually shows this area as GC, general commercial. Further to the south, I believe that's actually, should say 100 South, not 400 South on the map, south of there is the mixed-use general zoning district. The ultimate intent of this application is to seek a zoning map amendment following this process, should it ultimately be approved by the council, to also assign this property to that same MUG, mixed-use general zoning designation. But the application before you this evening is to amend the land use map to allow that to be an appropriate application. So this application would identify the area outlined in red to be reassigned to the mixed-use land use designation. You may recall that there was some discussion about the council's authority to look at other properties in a single, similar manner. You certainly have that ability to do that. Where this is a specific application from a property owner, we are representing it according to their application, but you do have that authority. So with that being said, the Planning Commission has heard this and forwarded a unanimous positive recommendation for your consideration this evening. Prior to the Planning Commission meeting, there was one fairly lengthy email received as public comment that has been provided to the council as well. It was provided separate from your packet, but it was provided to the council as well for your review and consideration, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I actually have one. Reading that, that letter, it was some things mentioned in there that was kind of disturbing, and I'm just curious to know if you or if the police department was ever called to remove some of the things that that letter spoke about, at that, at that area and at that trailer.
Yeah, I personally have not. I'll allow the chief to speak for the police department. I personally have not. We have worked with, I believe Ms. Jones, the applicant, was a party to it towards the later portion of the work, but certainly with the prior property owner, we did extensive work regarding possibilities, some renovation on the main floor, some, the start of some renovation upstairs. But as far as some of the assertions from that public comment, I personally have not been involved in those, no.
More specific? This one's not ringing a bell to me. 60 South Main Street.
Uh-huh.
Across from the county courthouse.
Yeah.
It's next, next to the food bank, really, and right there.
So in her email, she states that there's homeless people that are frequently in the area.
Which would make sense.
Says she's had SWAT raids in the building.
An illegally parked trailer.
You'd remember a SWAT raid, maybe? I don't know.
Drug use crimes.
No, but I, yeah, there are homeless around there. They leave the food bank, and they hang around there a lot. There's a, there's a company real close to that, that calls for them hanging around quite often, but.
The Beacon, Beacon House is what it's, isn't that what it's called? Because this is for rehabilitation, I think.
Right.
Yeah, the ultimate intent of this application, should the rezone, in fact, be approved following this process, is the applicant would like to operate a treatment facility in this, in this location, a residential treatment facility, which would allow for the treatment and the more commercial aspects of it to happen on the main floor, and some living quarters for those in treatment on the upper floor.
I'm not sure of what trailer she is referring to unless she means that mobile home that is in that parking lot, but I thought that was owned by the person who wrote this letter, so I may be confused at who really owns that mobile home.
I know who owns the mobile home, and we've, we've been called on it as a nuisance, but it's been secure, no broken windows or anything like that, so we haven't, we haven't had anything to do with it.
And it's not illegally parked because it's private property, right? The parking lot is.
Yes. The owner of the property knows about it and doesn't want to talk to us about it being a nuisance at all.
Did the Planning Commission vote on this?
They did. They voted unanimous positive recommendation for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we will open the time up to the public. We ask that you state your name into the mic, keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and turn the time back to the council. Any other further discussion, or are we ready to make a motion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion when you approve ordinance 2023-11, an ordinance of the Tuilla City, Tuilla City reassigning the land use designation for approximately 0.39 acres of property located at 60 South Main from community commercial to mixed use.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Hanson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Graff.
I'm Councilman Brady. I also vote aye.
That passes 5-0. Item seven is ordinance 2023-08, an ordinance of Tuilla City amending Tuilla City Code, Chapter 5-20, regarding alcohol licensing, presented by Roger Baker, the city attorney.
Thank you, council. As you will recall, perhaps painfully, we talked about this at some length two weeks ago. Most often, I'm standing here suggesting new laws for Tuilla City. Tonight, I'm in front of you to ask that you repeal some longstanding existing laws. Tuilla City, like many municipalities, has regulated the licensing of businesses that sell alcohol, but over the years and decades, the state of Utah has increased their regulations of the same business. And in our recent experience, our police efforts to do background checks and our licensing efforts to check business license applications and qualifications is a duplication of efforts already being undertaken by the state of Utah. They do criminal background checks. They look for criteria that would disqualify someone from getting a license to sell beer or liquor. And so our recommendation to you has been that allow us to use our limited resources in other places, instead of officers needing to do background checks that duplicate state background checks and, and go measure distances from point A to point B. You know, they have other calls they need to attend to more urgently, and likewise, the Community Development Department is plenty busy with business licenses and building permits and other things of that nature. So we, we debated amongst ourselves as staff and, and discussed with you some options of, of how to proceed, and what you have before you tonight is, is the end result of that long discussion process. So we've left just a few minor provisions that basically invite the involvement of the Health Department, that preserve the authority of the police department to inspect business premises if they need to as part of their regular duties, as well as, and the third is to call attention to the fact that sometimes when we have special events and give special event permits, alcohol, beer can be served at a, quote, "beer garden", unquote, as part of the special event permit. Other than that, all of these businesses will have to work with the state, submit their applications, get their background checks, check all the boxes, and then the state will regulate them, and it's a big, big job, but it's a big department with a big chunk of the state code, 137 pages. So, and of course, our police officers will continue to make sure that the businesses are not selling to underage buyers. That's an important police function, and they'll continue to do that. Are there any questions I can answer for you or concerns I can try to address? And this has been a joint effort with Jim Bolser and Chief Adrian Day. They're here to supplement what I say or answer your questions as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Looks like just what we talked about.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve ordinance 2023-08, an ordinance of Tuilla City amending Tuilla City Code, Chapter 5-20, regarding alcohol licensing.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio, and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Graff.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady. I also vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item eight is Resolution 2023-19, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council authorizing, authorizing payment of fee in lieu of water rights conveyance for Microtel Moda Hotel Project, presented by Jared Stewart, or Roger, it looks like, if you can present it.
Doesn't look like Jared Stewart.
No. I was like, I didn't see Jared out there.
Little less hair.
Roger will present this.
Oh, that was cool.
And what I do have isn't red or curly. No, I'm happy to present this item for Jared this evening, who was not able to attend, and, and we prepared this together anyway. So I'll present the resolution to you, the specifics of this particular application, but I'd also like to suggest that we use this as a springboard for a policy discussion on how to, how to address this issue for this application and moving forward. So this application is for a new hotel project that is requesting the ability to pay you a fee for eight acre-feet of water, instead of having to acquire water rights on the market and convey those to you. And we've, we don't need to discuss why. We've done that for years now. And Jared has done a good job in, at putting into the resolution the economic development considerations for you to weigh as you decide if this is the kind of business that you want to provide this incentive to, because it is, it's an incentive. It's not one that costs you money necessarily, but it is one that involves city assets and favorable treatment to the applicants. So it's relatively recent that we have been bringing these to you by resolution. Before last year, we would just bring it to you as an agenda item, talk with you about it, get your direction, and go from there, but we began to have so many of them, and we have such a limited resource, that we thought it would be better protect the city and better assist you if we had a standardized process that looked at the costs and benefits, that created a record both in the minutes and recordings and with the resolutions. And so we've started to do that. And then even more recently, we realized that none of, all of these applications are created equal, that they're, we've had two that were not individual businesses asking to buy water rights for their business, but rather developers, develop- to buy water rights for their business, but rather developers developing lots that they would sell to businesses that would then be able to pay the fee in lieu. And we thought it was very important to make a distinction there so that we were not creating an unlevel playing field by allowing certain developers to quote "buy in" unquote, and then perhaps be able to mark up land values as they sold to buyers because they now have water. So we didn't want to be used for market speculation. So we began to suggest, at your request, a time limitation or a sunset on those. We have not, however, suggested or brought to you the idea of a sunset for the individual business applicants like Burt Brothers or, or the hotel. That's not to say that we shouldn't do that, and I think we most certainly should talk about it. And when I say "we," I mean you, because it's a very important legislative policy, and I encourage you to have a legislative discussion, and I'm glad to be part of that. I have suggested to Jared that if this, this is something the council wants to do on a regular basis, that rather than craft, recreate the wheel with every resolution, let's go back to your policy and put it right in your policy that this is how we're going to do it. And you will not be able to just buy it and speculate and sit on your property for 10 years while you're waiting for the right time. That's not a good use of your assets, right? And so I'd love to hear what you think of it. With the developers, we suggested that they have two years from, I wrote it to be two years from the approval of the resolution, but I think we changed it slightly to be two years from the approval of the plat, that they had two years from that date to get their first building for, permit for a building to show that they're in earnest, they have skin in the game, and that's, that they're, it's a real thing. I don't know how you feel about that two years, if you feel that would be good for the individual applicants, like the hotel also. I'd love to hear what's your, your thoughts.
On two things. After our last meeting, I was thinking, I was thinking about it after, that we're doing this fee in lieu of water, are we going to limit that sometime of how much we're doing for businesses? I mean, that, you know, even though I'm totally against stopping business growth, I'd like business growth to happen, I just, I think we're doing that with the city water the way it is, but if we're doing this, I'm concerned about that. You know, because you're going to, everybody jump on and, like you said, and I think all of them should be on the same two-year limit. I mean, not just, you know, we had the developer on 1000 North on the north side, that's more of a speculative thing.
And you did that.
We approved it. And, but yet you have Burt Brothers and Napa, I think they've already started building, haven't they?
I don't know.
You know, so, but if they just was to buy and speculate too, it should be, I think they should all be even on that. I don't know. My thoughts.
I agree.
So I do want to answer your question about do we, should we put limitations on the number of acre feet that we sell? And your current policy does provide that an applicant can pay for no more than 20 acre feet, and that, and you've capped it at 50 acre feet per year. And I think this year already, we're up into the low 30s. That may include the Microtel, the eight. So those are fairly arbitrary figures, but we wanted, years ago, when we, the council first did this, they wanted to have some limitations so it wasn't wide open. And the more we do this, the more important that limitation is, because we're not buying new water rights all the time. They're not there. So one possibility is that they can't even apply until they are ready for a building permit. But that's kind of a chicken and egg problem. They may not be able to buy the property unless they know they can have water and even apply for a building permit, so.
Yeah, I think that came up, I mean, that when we were talking about the policy.
And I think they should be able to, you know, at least if the waters are, our policy says, I can't say the water's available, but the policy says we'll sell the water in lieu. I think that's important, that does give them the opportunity to go from there without worrying about the water. That's, I mean, that's an important policy to have.
And I think a bank would require it before they lend money for a project.
Yeah, if you can't have water on your building, you just spent millions of dollars on it, it's going to be impossible to do anything again.
How do you feel about the two-year timeframe we've set up for the developer scenario where they're not paying for it, we're just reserving it for them? Do you think that two years would apply well in the building permit scenario like this one?
Would that be a start date, probably, then, building permit? Because some projects take longer than that, but.
Well.
That's just a thought. It wasn't a question. I didn't mean it to be a question.
Well, I think, if I can, though, I think it's a good question, because if someone is far along, far enough along down the process to be standing in front of you asking for this benefit, should we require that they be far enough along the process to get in gear and get their building permit filed? And two years, to me, seems like a long time from your commitment to give water to a project for them to even file a building permit. So I think that's a generous period of time.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking finished product, not building permit.
Oh, occupancy.
Yeah, I agree with that then, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, especially since we have it capped at 50. And, but then, just to go two years, within that year, well, 50 within the year, we could easily have all 50 obligated and no one doing anything for two years.
That's a great point.
And, you know, which holds a lot of stuff up, especially if there's someone who's ready to start today, you know what I mean? So two years is okay if it's okay with you guys, but you can say I'm an ant, see, because we've been.
Yeah, two years is a long time.
I'm, I'm totally cool with the year. I, I'm just saying, because of, because of that 50 per year.
Well, maybe if they're coming and asking for water, they ought to be ready to do their project.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm with you on that one as well. That's kind of sort of what I'm saying.
I initially suggested a year at the staff level, and we, we talked about it, and we received some feedback from the development community that that didn't give them enough time. I don't know that I'm convinced by that, especially when it's the developers, but, but I'm not a developer either, so.
I'm not either, but look how long it took. Well, that's a bad example, never mind. I was going to say, this, the project that's been going on 10th North for 25 years or whatever.
Bad example.
Yeah, yeah.
Just 14. It can take a while, yeah. But they do, they do take, especially big projects that are commercial. There are a lot of rules and whatever, but they, they could start an application process with a year and a year, wouldn't you think, of some kind, even though they might get denied and they're going through whatever for a long time.
The nice thing is that we're literally, we literally do not have to chisel this in stone where it can't be changed.
Right, true.
You can try a year, be more restrictive, or you can try two and see if you're getting strong along. But either one, I think, is reasonable.
They can always ask for an extension.
I agree, if you had a good project come up and we're out of water, that, that two-year thing does cause that issue.
Right. And the, the 50 acre foot per year limitation was decided on in 2015.
So we could change that, I guess, just like any other rule.
And you may want to have a discussion whether you should change that, because if you do 50 every year, and we're five years down the road.
Yeah.
That's a huge deficit from where we started, and maybe we don't have or don't want to offer 50 a year.
That was my question, what the limit is.
So that's a discussion that we need to have with, with Jamie and Paul, and so I wouldn't, I don't want to put them on the spot. We'll let them prepare and talk to you about that later. But I'd be happy to draft a proposed amendment to your policy that incorporates a two-year timeframe, and we'll bring it back and have a discussion. In the meantime, you do have this one before you, and you are not limited by the resolution we wrote. It's just what we brought to you, and if you want to see a time limitation, that, you're totally within your discretion to do that.
Any other questions or comments? Sounds like we're all in favor of the two-year. We've talked about it before, so.
I think so.
All right.
Would you like to see it as two years from the date of the resolution? To me, that's simplest, and more, or you could do two, two years from the date of site plan approval, but that's out of our control.
Yeah. Could that take a year? I mean, then you're getting three years.
Yep.
So I would be more comfortable with from when it's approved.
Great, which would be two years.
It's a generous amount of time.
That is, I agree.
Well, the whole purpose is to have them come in and start building, like not string us along, yeah, and we want the growth, but we don't want to wait 10 years or 25 like we have for some projects.
It's the same thing if the developer provides land for speculation, he's coming, kind of buying water unless we limit it.
Right.
And of course, at the end of the day, you retain the discretion to reexamine any particular circumstance and, and say, no, we're done, or we'll give you six more months or whatever. So I'll bring that back to you as a draft revision to your current policy, and we'll have another discussion. In the meantime, you have this one to, to vote on if you're ready.
Okay, we're ready to vote on this one? Would someone like to make a motion?
Chair, make a, make a motion that we approve resolution 2023-19, the resolution of Tulare City Council authorizing payment of a fee in lieu of water right conveyance for the Microtel Moda Hotel Project.
I'll second it.
Councilman McCall?
Can I ask for an amendment to that motion?
I'll just, I can ask for a clarification or you can.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Would you like to, would you like to just include in your motion a sunset or a time limitation on this application?
And you guys are letting me go first? I tell you what. And to, and, excuse me, water rights conveyance for the Micro Moda Hotel Project with the sun, with the sunset date of two years from today, today's date, as is dated where it's signed in the resolution.
I'll still second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman McCall, a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady. I also vote aye. That passes 5-0.
Chairman Brady, as a matter of procedure, would you like to see me prepare an amendment to the resolution or just write it in or just let the minutes, the records?
I think we should write it in, and then, yeah, then the minutes as well can.
I'll do that right now.
Okay, thank you. All right, item nine is ordinance 2023-12, an ordinance of the Tulare City Council providing for the distribution of PAR tax revenues presented by Michelle Pitt, the city recorder.
Thank you. On November 8th of 2022, we had a matter on the ballot before the residents to renew the Tulare City Parks Arts and Recreation Sales Tax, also known as PAR. And it passed with 69% in favor and 31% against. So state law requires that the Tulare City Council impose by a majority vote the PAR tax, and it requires that we do it by ordinance that, in order to distribute the PAR tax revenues received by the state tax commission. So this council has established through prior resolutions that the PAR tax is in the best interest of Tulare City and its residents. The PAR tax will begin to be collected on April 1st of 2023, and it will continue to be collected for a period of 10 years. So it will go through March 31st of 2033. So if you pass this ordinance tonight, it will meet the requirements of state law for the Utah State Tax Commission to collect and then to distribute the tax to Tulare City.
Great. Okay, any questions or comments? I think the PAR tax is great, and it is going to improve our perks a lot, and it has improved our perks a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of ordinance 2023-12, an ordinance of the Tulare City Council imposing the PAR tax and providing for the distribution of PAR tax revenues.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady. I also vote aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes 5-0. Item 10 is invoices and purchase orders. There aren't any invoices tonight. And then item 11 is our minutes from March 1st, 2023, City Council, already a work meeting, and the March 1st, 2023, City Council Business Meeting. I'll entertain a motion for the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Hanson, a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady. I also vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 12 is to adjourn. We're adjourned at 7:42.